Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Natasha McDaniel, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic devices. Thank you. We are happy to be back in session for this school year. And as a result, with our students back in session, tonight's presentation of the colors will be led by the Decanee Wildcat NJROTC Battalion. The pledges will be led by Wildcat Battalion Commanding Officer Cadet Ina Gota. The Color Guard Commander carrying the U.S. flag is Cadet Lieutenant Commander Emily Salinas. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Petty Officer Third Class Anthony Flatus. Left rifle is Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Avery Colner. And right rifle is Cadet Ensign Andrea Martina. The Decanee Wildcat NJROTC Battalion is led by Victor Adams. Thank you. At this time, will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Special allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unafraid, indivisible, and omnipotent, just as for all. And now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, our allegiance to the Texas one state, one individual.
Order. Colors. Ready, cut. Forward. March. Post. Present. Art. Order. Art. Ready, cut. Up, pouch, face. Left, face. Power, march.
At this time, let me ask, please remain standing and observe a moment of silence in your own way. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you for joining us, everyone. And I know we are a little bit behind times in starting our meeting tonight. And that's because we had to have a presentation with our former retired board members, Jana Gonzalez and Donald Davis. So again, we'd like to thank them for their years of service on Spring ISD, serving our students. I see Dr. Davis is with us in the audience. Please join me in giving them again a round of applause. Thank you. As we continue tonight, our next item is our superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and other trustees and those guests and team members in the audience. Good evening. This afternoon, we've had dozens of volunteers working on the phones and calling students who have yet to come to school so far. This phone break is in preparation for our annual success walk that'll be held this Saturday, September the 11th, with a special kickoff at 9:00 a.m. at the School for International Studies at Bama. All of the phone calls today and the event on Saturday are essential as we work to get all of our students back into the classrooms this year. It's also sending a message to everyone that we care about seeing our students in school every day. Though our challenges over the past 18 months with COVID, one thing that we have learned for sure is that our students need to be in school learning with their peers in classrooms every single day. While we know that there's been a lot of questions about virtual and virtual option, we know the best place for our students here in Spring ISD is in the classroom and with a teacher. We're focusing on providing the best in-person learning experience for all of our students and teachers, and we're committed to using all of our health and safety protocols that we know work. This Saturday for our success walk, you'll see teams of volunteers headed out into neighborhoods to talk with families and students about the importance of coming to school every day. We hope you'll help us spread the word. Also, I want to take a moment to recognize all of our Spring ISD team members who are making it possible for us to have a strong start this year. Every day, they're stepping up and coming to work to make a difference on behalf of all of our students. This is no small achievement, as I'm sure you can imagine, especially during these challenging times. And on behalf of the entire leadership team at Spring, I want to thank all of our employees for the work that they do. Whether you're serving as a bus driver, a child nutrition worker, a teacher, or another role, please know how much we appreciate your commitment and, most importantly, your hard work. Our students need you more than ever, and we know that this year. So we appreciate everything that you do. Finally, I want to take a moment to also applaud our high school football teams. This season is well underway with two games each for Spring Decanee and Westfield in the books. Our athletes are putting in a tremendous effort this season, and I want to thank all of our coaching staff for their support, their encouragement, their inspiration. They provide our players. Next month, we'll start to see our teams play each other. So it's going to be very interesting to see the matchups. I'd encourage everyone to come out to our games for the camaraderie and for the phenomenal halftime performances from our marching bands. This does conclude my comments and announcements for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Next, I'd like to ask any board trustee if you would like to give comments.
I had the opportunity this past week to attend a mentor-mentee kickoff over at Planet Ford where all of our first-year teachers here in Spring that are being introduced to every student, every teacher, every day, met and did fellowship with their mentor teachers. And I was able to tell the story about my mentor teacher. Almost 20 years ago, Mrs. Ernestine St. Junius in St. Mary Parish taught me all the things that would later on make me into a good teacher because that first year is always rough. And so I just wanted to thank the district for providing that outlet and that resource and that support for our teachers, especially our first-year teachers.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Sergeant Olivari. If you were here at our board work session last week, you noticed I was not. On the way here, about five minutes away, my car started going haywire, lost power steering, and so I actually was blocking traffic and lost control. But thankfully, I was safe. I was able to make my way off the road, gave a call to my board members, got ahold of Jeremy, and he let me know that an officer would be on the scene very quickly. And that was no joke. About 10 minutes later, Sergeant Olivari was there. He helped get my car from obstructing traffic. He helped to communicate with the tow truck driver. Right now, with COVID, you're not even allowed to ride in the tow trucks with them. So he ensured that I made it home safely. So I just wanted to take a moment to commend the Spring ISD Police Department Captain and just let you know that I appreciate that excellence in service and dedication to the board. So thank you again to Sergeant Olivari.
I had an opportunity to spend a wonderful evening with our Transportation Department on this past Friday night as we treated them at the football game, at the Decanee Football Game. So I'd like to give a big shout out to our bus drivers. I learned about the double routes that they take. I learned how our Director of Transportation, Jack, is out at 5:00 in the morning getting on the bus with the bus drivers driving. Everyone in administration is out driving buses from the Transportation Department. They go overboard. They do double routes in the evenings to make sure that all of our kids are home safely. When they are taking our students to football games and other places, they take turns and they're making sure that they get back safely. So a big shout out to our Transportation Department. We even had mechanics who are driving buses to help make sure that our students are getting to school safely. So if anybody tells you that Spring ISD doesn't work as a team, let me know so I can get on them because that is truly not the case. Each department really works as a team in Spring ISD to support our students. So thank you to the Transportation Department.
President Newhouse, I'd like to add to that. I have a grandchild who was with a bus driver who was doing her third route. And I'm just so thankful that we actually have in-district training. If you want to be a bus driver, anyone, please, you will provide a wonderful service to the community if you will do that.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. I think everyone knows that there is a shortage, but I don't think they know how hard and overtime our department works for our students. So thank you. As we continue tonight, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Communications Officer for our Points of Pride. So at this time, Ms. Woods.
Good evening, Board President Newhouse, trustees, Dr. Watson, and everyone in attendance this evening, whether in person or watching via Zoom. As a reminder for anyone who might be new to our Point of Pride program, these awards are given to students and staff with significant achievements that extend beyond the district level, including high-level, state, national, or global recognition. Our first Point of Pride this evening celebrates a dedicated member of our Spring ISD Transportation Team, Routing Specialist Valerie Laha. Over the summer, she received the Statewide Operations Specialist of the Year Award for 2021 from the Texas Association for Pupil Transportation. We're happy to have Valerie with us here tonight to be recognized for this awesome achievement. At this time, I'd like to welcome Director of Transportation Jack Mann to the podium to introduce Valerie and tell us a little bit more about the award.
Good evening, Dr. Watson, President Newhouse, members of the board. It is a very special honor. The Texas Association for Pupil Transportation is one of the largest organizations of a kind in the United States. Throughout the year, we take nominations for multiple different awards that are given. And this past June, the Texas Association for Pupil Transportation decided that Spring ISD's very own Valerie Laha deserves recognition. Out of over 80 applicants for an award, she deserved the award for the Operation Specialist of the Year. In her recommendation of Valerie, Valerie's direct supervisor, Katherine Fuller, mentioned specifically that Valerie's detail-oriented nature and especially her willingness to serve the people that she works with really represented, as President Newhouse mentioned, the team atmosphere that we try and build in the Transportation Department to support the students of the district. So I'd ask you to help me congratulate Valerie one more time.
Please feel free to share some words with us if you'd like, Valerie.
I think Jack pretty much said it all. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
And again, thank you. Please continue.
So Ms. Newhouse, as you and the trustees know, it's not often that I have the opportunity to share our Points of Pride, but it brings me great honor this evening to recognize our Communications Department. So I'm going to ask Sylvia and our communications team to come up and stand before you. So tonight, we're going to be taking advantage of a special opportunity to highlight our award-winning work of our Spring ISD Communications Department. As we all know, they're usually behind the scenes, supporting the work of campuses and other departments, interacting with the media, or helping to tell our Spring ISD community about the great things that's happening all around our district. They are also busy ensuring that Spring ISD remains a trusted source of information for our community, providing clear, timely, and transparent communications about what matters to our families, students, and staff. So some of you may remember, back in March, we had an opportunity to recognize our Communications Department when they won 40-star awards from the Texas School Public Relations Association. Well, this summer, the department also won an additional 25 National School Communication Awards from the National School Public Relations Association in its annual awards program, including 10 top awards of excellence. The winning entries highlight the work in education, communication, and marketing, including print, electronic communications, video, writing, web-based, and social media campaigns. We're proud of the work the department does and how the work celebrates the achievements of our students, staff, and schools. I'm especially grateful for how our communications team connects the district to the community, which has been an incredible support for our Spring ISD families during the pandemic when timely, transparent communications have been a vital source of information. Congratulations to the Chief Communications Officer, Sylvia, and her entire team on these National School Communication Awards for 2021. Thank you for all you do to support our district, and most importantly, thank you all for the excellence that you all serve and show every single day. Congratulations. I hope you trained him, Jim. Sylvia, would you like to say a few words on behalf of your team?
Just that we have an amazing team here. Really, this work couldn't be done without everybody who's standing here this evening. Not everybody could be here. But we really appreciate the support of the trustees and you, Dr. Watson, to enable us to do what we do. So thank you very much.
Communications Department, we are very, very proud of you. I enjoy watching your videos on our website. I enjoy looking at the videos that you put together for us for presentations. We are just amazed, and we get quite a few compliments on the work that you do. So Spring couldn't be seen without our Communications Department. Everybody's talking about the wonderful information that you put out. So thank you so very much, and we're going to continue to push you, to push Spring ISD and get our information and word out into the community. So please let us know if there's anything we can do to help your department. Thank you.
Madam President, if I could just add, as a parent, I am extremely appreciative of the way the website is designed. And I don't know if the person directly responsible for that is here right now, but it is very well put together and easy to access. Thank you, sir. I actually, one time, project managed a website for HCD, and it is not easy work, and it's not hard to please everybody. The way our website is laid out is really user-friendly, and so thank you again.
As we continue tonight.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I was pressing the wrong button. I just wanted to echo that as well. I love the brochure that we just received at home. And you all do such an excellent job in how things are laid out and presented. I too manage a website for our whole network of physicians, and it's not an easy task. And you do an amazing job, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to say that because awareness is the first step to change. Awareness is what will help to build the bridge between the parent and the district. And it really takes... Learning happens in the classroom between that teacher and the child, but it takes that parental involvement and engagement. And you all put the information out there so that our parents can be informed. As Justine Adams said, it's easy to use. And without what you do, we couldn't complete the circle that we need to be successful in making sure that our students become avid learners. So thank you.
As we continue tonight, our next item is Agenda Participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on the agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under Agenda Participation tonight?
No, Madam President, we do not.
So as we continue, I would like to recognize our Chief of Innovation and Equity, Dr. Lefita Henahosa.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, members of the board, Dr. Watson. So tonight, we'll have the component that's known as our public hearing for our 2021-22 Campus Improvement Plans. As you'll recall, last Thursday, we had a short presentation about our campus improvement plans. But most importantly, we had three of our principals that were here to share not only the process that they went through, but most importantly, the work of their campus improvement plans to guide this coming school year. We had Ms. Swerengen, who's our principal at Ponderosa Elementary. Not Ponderosa, I'm so sorry, Ikenro. And you'll remember, we talked about that work. It's just, she's been there so long. So we're so excited to have her at Ikenro and help us with that turnaround work. We also heard from Ms. Knowles, who is our principal at Wells Middle School. You'll recall, she was our resident principal last year. And then we also heard from Dr. Golden, our principal at Spring High School, also one of our resident principals. And they shared with you their work. You had the opportunity to also use the jump drive that you received to go over the campus improvement plans. So tonight, it's an opportunity for our public, if anyone came tonight, to speak to the campus improvement plans or to have any additional questions. If we have anyone...
Do we have board members that may have additional questions?
I did just want to repeat a request for longitudinal data on the campus improvement plans. I'd like to see what our areas of development were in previous years so that we, as a board, can track our progress on meeting the goals that the principals set in their campus improvement plans. So I just want to make sure that we get that data sooner rather than later.
To piggyback off of that, I was curious if we're able to see... I know in some of the campus improvement plans, running records were noted as a metric for literacy growth. If we, as the board, are able to see the running record data to take a look at the progress students make outside of MAP and benchmarks, but what teachers are seeing on a regular basis. So for when we revisit in October, that would be great data to take a look at.
So we don't have district-wide running record data. We have some campuses that give the DRA, but not all campuses give the DRA. We have not instituted that as of yet. We do provide information regarding MAP in ELA. And so we do present the MAP scores to you at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and the end of the year. However, as we're talking specifically about Ikenro, I'm not sure if Ikenro is a running record campus or not. Ms. Swerengen, do you all give DRA to your campus? So according to M-class, yes, all of them will get M-class data. So you'll be able to see that. Will we present that on a schedule to you all? But in terms of DRA, that's something that we have not done district-wide yet.
Okay, so it sounds like the M-class will be...
M-class, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I did notice a variety in the campus improvement plans, and I've just scratched the surface at this point. But I noticed that some schools did provide at least past year's data that you could track the difference in the pandemic year. Also, I just really appreciate that these are living instruments that will be added to and subtracted from and changed as needs change. So I expect we're going to see anything we want to see in the data. That this might be a good time to request it so that schools can include that. But I really appreciated that in the campus improvement plans, it's not just looking at deficiencies, it's also looking at strengths. I really like that because we need to recognize strengths and what we've done really well as we go forward and change things that we need to change.
I too would also like to thank you all for, you know, providing the information to us on a jump drive and insufficient amount enough time for us to really take a look at it. And I know each year, we have the public hearing, and we vote, and it goes by so quickly. And it does not reflect the level of engagement, hard work, that it took to actually put these improvement plans together. It starts as an educational code requirement, but there's actually a committee that works really hard. They had to have started during the summer months to even have it ready for us by this board meeting. And so I did just want to pause and take a minute to recognize the level of work and the detail. And if you haven't had an opportunity to really look at it, and it's not just a piece of paper, it's a living document on what's going to happen on that campus to improve. We get regular updates on it, and it's a critical piece of how we measure the success of our students. And so I just want to pause and say, we, as a board, know the level of work and how hard you guys worked to put it together. We really appreciate it, and we're looking forward to seeing the results. Thank you.
I do want to add one more thing to Trustee McDaniel's question. So one of the things that we also are hoping this year, we have our large cadre of teachers going through the Science and Teaching of Reading training. So we're hoping at the conclusion of their training, they'd have more skills to make the... to make those running records really come to life. We did try implementing that a few years ago, but it was more perfunctory, and not all the teachers really understood the running record process. And so we're hoping that once they finish training, that's something that we can look at implementing district-wide.
Thank you. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under this item?
No, Madam President, we do not.
We do not? Thank you. So to our trustees, I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring Independent School District 2021-2022 Campus Improvement Plan as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring Independent School District 2021-2022 Campus Improvement Plans as presented by the administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly Hodges, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring Independent School District 2021 through 2022 Campus Improvement Plan as presented by the administration. Is there any other discussion? Hearing done, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. As we continue on our agenda for tonight, the next item is our Consent Agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda. For those with us tonight, the Consent Agenda is reviewed on our work session night, which was this past Thursday, where presentations were made, discussions took place. And as a result, we bring the consent items to the board for approval. Do we have any questions from a board member?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
Second. It has been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Winford Adams, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, Section 551.072, and 551.074, 551.076. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 7:47 PM. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 9:18 PM. We will address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contracts of Keniah Russell, Jeffrey Alexander, Frederick Chambers, Ollie Holly, Crystal Lee, Desiree Mayo, Patrick Wesley, Delilah Sirocco, and Gloria Smith. Upon finding that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and authorized a superintendent or designee to notify the employees of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the board authorize a superintendent or designee to notify the State Board of Educators certification that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and of the action taken by the board.
Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams Jr., seconded by Deborah Jensen, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contracts of Katina Russell, Jeffrey Alexander, Frederick Chambers, Ollie Holly, Crystal Lee, Desiree Mayo, Patrick Wesley, Delilah Sakaro, Gloria Smith. Upon finding that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and authorized a superintendent or designee to notify the employees of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further, it's been further authorized that the superintendent or designee will notify the State Board of Education certification that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and the board action taken by the board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There's no further motions. Are there any other motions? Since there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn our meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Winford Adams, that the board adjourned our meeting for tonight. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. So this meeting is officially adjourned at 9:21 PM. Thank you.